Yeah, I'd like to call the seven hundred and tenth regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees. Monday, May eighth at two o'clock. We'll start out with the local places.
Trustee Beck?
Here.
Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Trustee Nenglo.
Yes.
Vice President Aguilash.
Here.
Vice President Richards.
Here.
Vice President, I know that trustee engine is here.
Okay, moving on to one point three. Any statements for conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I'll move on. Is there any public comment before the meeting? Seeing none, I'll move on. Madam Recorder, we have a closed session. If you could please tell us about that.
Item two point one, employee discipline dismissal release complaint. Item two, conference with labor negotiators, agency negotiator Trevor Stewart, Catherine Pressured, and employee organization is CSEA. Item two point three, conference with labor negotiators, agency negotiator Rex Randy Erickson, Randall Erickson, employee organization YFA. Item two point four is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Name of case is Title Nine Complaint, Complaintant One. Two point five, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, name of case Title Nine Complaint, Complaintant Two. Item two point six, public employee performance evaluation, title chancellor, step three, May board meeting. Item two point seven, conference with labor negotiators under unrepresented employees, agency designated representative chancellor Henry Young, unrepresented employee Columbia College president. Item two point eight, conference with labor negotiators, unrepresented employee, agency designated representative chancellor Henry Young, unrepresented employee vice chancellor of information technology and institutional research. Item two point nine, conference with labor negotiators, unrepresented employee, agency designated representative chancellor Henry Young, unrepresented employee vice president of instruction Columbia College. And lastly, item two point ten, conference with labor negotiators, unrepresented employee, agency designated representative chancellor Henry Young, unrepresented employee vice president of instruction Modesto Junior College.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll adjourn to closed session at two thirty-five.
Thank you.
We're ready. Okay, I want to call the 700th and 10th Regular Board Meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Meeting on Wednesday, May 8th, 224 at 5:30. Call the order, please. May we pledge allegiance to the flag, Mr. Garrett?
Okay. Pride, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Page. Trustee Davis.
Present.
If I would trouble you folks to turn on your mic just to confirm. Thank you. Trustee Garrett.
Present.
Trustee Hinton.
Present.
Trustee Nicolau.
Present.
Vice President Aguilar.
Present.
And Board President Richards.
Here.
Forum is established.
Okay, item 3.4, we do not have a report out of closed session. Moving on to 3.5, any statement of conflicts?
Trustee Aguilar.
I'm going to step up on one of, I don't remember the name of the.
Item 7.7 for the record.
Very good. Okay, 3.6, do we have any change in order of business? Okay, moving on, I'm very pleased that we have some public comments before we begin. I just want to convey our deepest sympathies and best wishes to President Tran who isn't here. Her husband had some major surgery and he's recovering well and I hope we all pray for him. So, public comment, you all limited to four minutes and I will cut you off after four minutes, I'm sorry, but that's, we have a lot of people to speak and I believe in time. So the first person is Krista Bartels.
Can you hear me? Okay, excellent, thank you. I am using my time for public comment to read a statement that was written by a Columbia College faculty member. These are not my words. This statement is being shared anonymously at the request of the faculty member to protect them from potential retaliation. The anonymous public comment states, "I would like to use my time for public comment to affirm that many students, staff, and faculty are suffering from a hostile work environment due to the current campus climate under the leadership of Dr. Lena Tran. As stated in our core values, we value working in a collaborative and inclusive manner to meet the holistic needs of our diverse student population. We value kindness and respect in all of our interactions. In the past two years, Dr. Tran has demonstrated a lack of collegiality and professionalism for students, staff, and faculty. Additionally, our institutional wellness is at an all-time low. I respectfully ask that the board works expeditiously on our behalf to restore the health and well-being of Columbia College. Thank you for your time."
Thank you very much. Now she's back, Lana Van Eppes.
I just worried that you missed me.
We did.
So, good evening, trustees and Chancellor Young. I'm Lana Van Eppes and I am compelled to speak this evening to ask for your support for Columbia College. As the board is aware, there are campus climate issues with increasing severity. This one-way communication of the public comments is not really the ideal for problem-solving, but I hope that what you hear tonight will stimulate a conversation amongst the board of what needs to change to help Columbia thrive. So I am going to share some quotes from my colleagues, all of whom have begged to be anonymous. We're a small college, so really any details would lead back to a person or a department. But many of the quotes were similar, so quote, "I want to speak out, but I am afraid of retaliation from our college president in small ways and large ways. We are drowning. She's going to work us to death. There is so much on my plate that I cannot do a good job on any of them." Who else are we going to lose because of our toxic work environment? So in reference to the fact that few, if any, people have made an official report to HR or their union, if they have one, this is not the evidence that everything is fine. The frog doesn't report that the pot is heating up, even though everyone can see that the method of operation has been toxic from the beginning and the frog is in increasing danger. Another quote, "Esteemed board members, the letter that the Academic Senate of Columbia College sent to Dr. Tran asking for a more collegial environment, especially with respect to classified staff, was not the first attempt. In June of 2022, nearly two years ago, members of an interview committee sent Lena a letter highlighting an incident which she chose to berate a classified professional in front of candidates and the committee. All issues she chose to blame on the classified professional were due to her own mismanagement of time. There was no response or acknowledgement of the issues or the letter, and it seems as though her behavior remains unchanged. The classified professionals involved in this incident chose to take an early retirement rather than to continue to work under Dr. Tran. I urge you not to renew her contract unless we lose more of our staff to her mismanagement," end quote. As a final note, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to express my gratitude for educators everywhere, but especially to my own. From fifth grade through graduate school, I have had some of the most amazing math mentors, and I'd like to name them since we've had so many anonymous quotes. Sherri Jones, Merrill Landis, Linda Patton, Jen Brooks. I am forever grateful for your guidance along the way. Happy Teacher Appreciation Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Kaufman?
Alhaka kahyaka kako, YCCD Board and Chancellor Young. Tonight I will be sharing a statement written by Child Development, Columbia College Child Development Professor, Dr. Adrian Seegerz, who could not be here this evening. Hello, YCCD Board members. I have been working at Columbia College in a variety of roles for the last 26 years. I am so proud to be a part of the Columbia College family and the way we serve our students and our community. As you are aware, the college is struggling under the direction of its top leader. The situation is limiting our ability to provide the highest quality education to our students. I urge you to support Columbia College in a resolution to this struggle so we can refocus on our mission, vision, and values and get back to the important business of changing lives one student at a time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Slate?
Dear Board, I would like to welcome you to the Columbia College campus. It is an honor to be invited here and an even greater honor to be able to work here. Columbia College is different from other colleges. Although people often focus on the small size of Columbia College, what they are missing is that we do our jobs exceptionally well. Our small size affords us the opportunity to provide personal attention to each individual student. This is known as the Columbia College Touch. As faculty and staff, we care deeply about our students, both inside and outside the classroom. Their safety and well-being are our number one priority. However, under Dr. Tran's leadership, this has changed. For example, we frequently get snowstorms, which makes our roads hazardous. The local geography dictates that it snows first and worst to the east before it reaches campus. Many of our students, faculty, and staff live in that direction. Thus, it is crucial to allow these individuals the chance to get home safely before road conditions become treacherous. This is especially important for students who often do not have four-wheel-drive vehicles or tires with good tread. Instead, several inches of snow and ice have often been allowed to accumulate on campus roads and paths before students, faculty, and staff have been allowed to leave. This has resulted in several crashes and spinouts leaving campus. The locals have advised that these dangerous incidents could easily have been avoided by closing the campus before the storm hits. Additionally, every fall semester, the faculty and staff gather to enjoy a holiday meal together. Last December, this included some invited student workers. However, they were told that the meal wasn't for students and they were asked to leave. First, as employees of the college, these students had a right to be there. Second, it is Columbia College culture to ensure that our students have sufficient food, even if we go without. We would never turn away students asking for a meal, yet they were still rejected despite the abundance of food available. This treatment of our students brought several faculty and staff members to tears. It is simply not our way. Thank you for listening to my concerns. I am asking that you carefully consider what you have heard today and work quickly to restore the health and safety of Columbia College. We care deeply about our students and are united in our efforts to protect them and serve them to the best of our abilities. Please act to ensure that we can continue our work.
Thank you. Felsey Hofstadt?
Good evening. I would like to respectfully use my time to affirm that students, staff, faculty, and myself included are suffering from a hostile work environment under the leadership of Dr. Tran. As many of us can attest to, transitions in leadership certainly bring forth challenges. However, under the leadership of Dr. Tran over the past two years has not only tested the resilience and cohesion of our institution, but unfortunately, it has caused a significant fracture in my opinion. Having served as a full-time classified professional and part-time instructor at Columbia College for the past seven years, I truly felt like I hit the jackpot when I was hired back in 2017. The college atmosphere has perpetually felt like a big family, characterized by mutual care and dedication to our students, encapsulated in what we formally refer to as the Columbia Way. Regrettably, the warmth that once defined our campus climate has dissipated under Dr. Tran's leadership. Many of us find ourselves stifled and raising concerns regarding staffing deficiencies within our departments, while simultaneously being burdened with escalating workloads worsened by an influx of new grants without a workforce to meet objectives. We are embarrassed by many of the things that our president says and does in public spaces and are afraid to speak out out of fear of retaliation. We all deserve to exist in a space. We all deserve to exist in a space and healthy environment. Further, some of the hallmarks of higher learning are to consider varying perspectives, the willing to challenge our own preconceived ideas, engage in healthy discourse, and grow as a result of all of those things. These are concepts we should be modeling for our students. Transformative learning is stifled in spaces that lack idea-sharing collegiality and professionalism. In fact, collegiality and professionalism are specifically included in our college's core values. Our president has repeatedly demonstrated that she does not share those same core values. As an instructor within the business domain, the discourse on toxic organizational cultures features prominently in my curriculum each semester. I emphasize to my students the imperative of holding leaders accountable for upholding institutional values and fostering an environment conducive to growth while also encouraging them not to shy away from voice and dissent in the face of adversity. Today, I stand before you, hoping that my testimony serves as an example that I too practice what I teach. Thank you.
Dr. Stephanie Beaver-Guzman?
Hey, Young, Metrix's district colleagues. I'm Dr. Stephanie Beaver-Guzman. I've been a faculty member here at Columbia for eight years. I've come to speak at this board meeting for the first time in my entire career, working the community college system, which began in 2005 as a classified member. I'm here to share my observations about our campus climate under our current president. I have an important comparison to share. In my doctoral research, I learned how Native American faculty navigate academia, a system that has its own set of challenges. One of those findings was that they remain silent, intentionally silent, regardless of reasons for grievance. They choose to remain silent, not out of being passive, but out of survival. This is exactly what I see happening to my colleagues, admin, faculty, and classified. We're all terrified to say or share our experiences because of retaliation from our president. They are fearful of how their work life will change, even more, with small inadvertent forms of backlash. The kind of backlash that doesn't constitute a formal grievance complaint, but it still impacts you wanting to show up to work the next day. Is this representative of what a healthy work environment looks like? Even I considered, "How will speaking affect my job, my ability to get important work done next year? What will I experience?" But here I am, taking a big risk, because you know, you need to know. I refuse to be silent, and things have to change. My colleagues, who are all hardworking, do so much for this campus, are now being required to carry out extra workloads. We operate in the most unhealthy environment I have experienced in my nearly 20 years of higher education. I see colleagues in trauma mode, appeasing, fleeing, freezing in response to this president. We are not in an environment where one can offer feedback to her regardless of how inappropriate her actions or her statements might be. We are gaslit. When we said at a town hall meeting in fall that people were carrying too much extra work due to these grants, she rejected the statement and denied it. When we said again that there is a workplace climate issue, the president refused to accept this. This in itself is not healthy. It's abusive. When we express ourselves, we are shut down or spoken over. Is this aligning with district values? Is this how you would want your loved ones to be treated in the workplace? Under this leadership, we have lost significant employees. They've left despite loving it here. They've left despite loving it here. I'm fearful we will keep losing more quality people. Even I have considered taking opportunities elsewhere because of this climate. But I haven't left, because I am truly invested in this campus, our students, and our community. We desperately need leadership who share the same values. Thank you for making decisions with our college, our students, and our community and mine.
Madison Jogan? Madison Jogan, did I say that right?
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Madison Jogan. I am a student here at Columbia College. I have been since fall of 2022. I'm also the Director of Publicity for ASCC, a transfer services peer mentor, and a resident assistant for the dorms here. I'm here today because of consistent miscommunication from Dr. President Lena Tran with her students and her staff here at Columbia. Since I've transferred here, anytime I've tried to ask questions about our president, I get a simple, "She's our president. She does her job" with a forced smile. That doesn't give me a lot of confidence. My fellow students have had nothing particularly nice to say about the president due to situation with not communicating with our advisor for ASCC, the eerie feeling of disapproval and dismissal whenever they spoke to Tran, or the rumors of her narcissism and degrading tone towards staff and faculty, even simple mundane rumors like taking up the one car charger lot as a parking space so students who have electric vehicles can't use it, or even her interesting speeches at graduation, including the degradation of her niece, her high school-aged son, and this past graduation where she went into very specific detail about the traumatic experiences she experienced while moving over here. Now granted, as remarkable as her situation is, and props to her, it did trigger a lot of PTSD for graduating students, military students, and other friends and family there at the graduation to where a majority almost left, and a very vast majority of the remaining participants being children. There was a couple instances mentioned before, including our animal luncheon, where it wasn't mentioned that Dr. Lena Tran actually ended up locking the doors to the bistro and dictating who could and could not come in after the on-campus fire department came in on their lunch break and was denied because almost all of them are student workers considerably. Another one was during a luncheon that ASCC had with Dr. Tran, where our advisor was not included in that luncheon, and she essentially made it into a prop-to-business meeting. It should not have happened without our advisor, and this is where she kind of spoke about matters around the campus, specifically the dorms that I want to bring up. By this time, so about October 11th of 2023, I had already been working as an RA for about seven months and was already in the discussion of the potential future of the dorms. So to hear Dr. Tran make a statement that we had a multimillion-dollar contract already in play and being used to build new dorms at Oak Pavilion, where a ground was already broken into, and that it was already approved on the way, knowing full well that that was not true. I had to sit there while every single one of my ASCC members stared at me with a confused look on their face because they knew she was lying, and they knew that that wasn't true. We were never in the running for that grant. Nothing was approved. And this was after she had made a statement in a news article where already in the pipeline, Columbia College President Dr. Lena Tran detailed a plan to build a new dormitory on open land next to the Oak Pavilion on campus, the Hope for Facility with around 100 beds that could be rented by students for around $650 per month, and currently waiting on state funding. She told us we had the funding. That price was not verified. In fact, we've had to keep it at the price that we have due to property taxes being in such an increase. So when we talked to the company that was taking over, she told us that she was confused.
Okay, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Can I at least finish?
I'm sorry.
Just at least one sentence?
You can have one sentence.
I've spent a long time here, listening to my mother and how she boasts about this amazing school for 20 years. I would like to be able to give that opportunity to my children, but unfortunately, under Lena Tran's presidency, I do not see that happening. Thank you.
Andy Murrow?
Good evening. I'm using my time for public comment to read a statement that was written by a Columbia College faculty member. I want to be very clear, these are not my words. The statement is being shared anonymously at the request of the faculty member to protect them from potential retaliation. To the District Board and Chancellor Young, I would like to add my voice to the voices gathered here tonight to address the campus climate at Columbia College. I have been an employee of Columbia College for 15 years through several administrative changes, including five presidents. I intend to speak directly to the point. Our current president, Dr. Lena Tran, is unsuitable for the presidency of our college. She has created a hostile and toxic work environment. I realize that she has presented herself publicly and to the District Board as a dynamic and warm-hearted leader. But the lived experience of the employees who were closely with her reveals a much different side. Classified staff members report the lowest morale in history. Most of our faculty are distressed and concerned that she seems unable to comprehend the true spirit of shared or participatory governance. Many walk on eggshells, as might someone in an abusive household. She arbitrarily threatens to fire people when displeased, lacks awareness of appropriate demeanor in challenging circumstances, distresses faculty and classified staff when she interacts with students and the public, and disrespects basic boundaries. She is known to be digressive and tangential on just about any topic she tackles, often leaving her audience, employees, students, or the public confused as to her original point. She is a master of deflection when confronted and appears to pivot or outright lie when challenged. This deflection was evident in the town hall meeting when there were some very respectful questions about potential misappropriation of grant funds. We have already lost many hardworking and loyal employees because working closely with Dr. Tran is completely untenable. They have retired early or taken other jobs. She has been a topic of conversation and concern at every single academic set meeting during the last two years. Why have I not given you particulars? Because the particulars put myself and my fellow colleagues at risk of retaliation. This is not a safe working environment. This will be an anonymous letter. My fear is that the chancellor and the board will be dismissive. I beg you to consider these words seriously. Dr. Tran is already actively applying to work elsewhere, but the damage she has done will live on for years to come. Please do not renew her contract. Respectfully submitted, anonymous.
Danielle Maxwell? Danielle Maxwell? Welcome back. I remember you from Modesto.
Hi, Danielle. Been a fellow student here since 2016. Yeah, quite a while, right? So I'm in the FNR program, and I've watched that program go from like four weed whackers to this huge, beautiful program. I've been in India for 16 months. I want to know what's going on. I want to know where my teachers are at. I want to continue my education. I came back to US soil to be like coming back and home, and this is my second home, and thank you all for filling me in for what's going on at our college. Because I can't get answers from my friends. Where are my teachers at? You know, I have a kid that comes here, these special needs. You guys have welcomed him. Full arms welcomed him, and it's rule of thumb for the teachers to allow them in their classes. Laura, Tom, Crystal have allowed that in their program, and my son has flourished. We're Tom's kids. He wouldn't even hurt a fly, let alone a tick. And he hates ticks. We are his kids. Literally, he has fostered this program. And I hear about like teachers leaving, and we have teachers that want to be here and come back, and we have something going on. I mean, rumors are flying around, and I mean, these are like absurd, really bad rumors that if this was about me, this would be hard to show face in my own community. I want answers, and I want to know why my friends and my family aren't here, and we're having these problems? Like on top of this, and we can't bring good teachers back that want to be here, and they left upon principle? I want answers. We want answers. I want to come back. Dude, I was in India, a developing country. I came back to the US soil to come back to Columbia College. I was excited. And I come back to drama, rumors, BS, no answers, left in the dark, broken friendships, nothing, nothing. I don't want to finish my education here and like, you know, I'm two classes away from two degrees and five certificates, and this allowed me to make almost a six-figure business. Tom fostered that for me. That's what I've learned through this program. There's so many people that have jobs from like high-grade tech to all the way to the bottom that he and this program have done and planted seeds in our community and are doing good. Bring them back. Where's Tom at, dude? Bring him back. Like, seriously, this isn't cool. We have a summer semester coming up. I mean, gosh, we're talking about funds and money and grants. I mean, that man's made a lot of money for this college and a lot of connections for this college. You know, you want to talk numbers, let's talk heart and humanity. I mean, I thought it was, you know, you're innocent before guilty, and this man's been persecuted. This program's been persecuted. I have friends questioning me about this forest program where they should put their kids and their sons in there from Boy Scouts, from church, because this has gotten around our community, and I'm Calaveras, like up in the hills, bro. I don't have neighbors. Come on, this is USA. Let's do this. Freedom of speech. And all this I've heard is silence, silence. I'm afraid, I'm afraid. Retaliation? You know? Yeah, this is a small community. We need to get with the program.
Katrina Weston?
Hello, everybody. This is my first time speaking. I'm a math instructor here at Columbia College, and thank you all for being here. I know that this is a really hard job, and sometimes there are hard decisions and things to do. I was on a board at Sumner High School, so that's a hard thing. So I just wanted to address the public speaking aspect. I have a letter from a student who, she wants to remain anonymous about the graduation speeches, so. It says, "Dear faculty, staff, and board members, I write regarding the speech given at our graduation ceremony by Lena Tran. I witnessed the extremely lengthy speech as I sat anxiously awaiting recognition of my hard-earned associate degree that took an embarrassing number of years to complete due to my own life events, none of which I was there to focus on. Lena's speech took me and several others from the sound of the shuffling, far from the present moment. It was thick with imagery of Lena's personal biography of adverse experiences that did not directly pertain to why we were all there. I felt the wording was unprofessional and at times dark and absurd. At the closing, I felt more shame than a sense of encouragement. Halfway through the speech, I wondered who this person was, not realizing it was the acting president of the school. Until this moment, I had not seen nor heard of her otherwise on campus. I'd like to suggest that in the future, the school considers what is spoken at such a special ceremony. I found the last speech from our fellow student much more relevant and hopeful. I am grateful to the rest of the faculty and the staff for their wonderful work through the many years I've attended the school." And that was the conclusion of that, and that's all I would like to say is just that if we do public speaking, it's our voice that's heard, being heard, and so even editing speeches and having someone look at it is very important to me, and we suggested that last year because the speech at the graduation, it was embarrassing. I had my head down, and I was a little embarrassed. So this is our voice and a collective voice, and we'd like to all work together, not saying it can't be mended, but just something to be addressed. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. JJ Benoit? JJ Benoit? JJ Benoit? Okay, Bonnie, oh, you're coming up? Okay.
Would you like to introduce yourself to the board?
Yes.
Tell them your name.
Yeah, JJ Benoit.
Yep, and why do you come to college here, and who do you see at college?
Yeah, Baker Station.
That's right. And what do you do at Baker Station?
Yeah, camping.
And who are your teachers at Baker Station?
Yeah, Thomas Hofstadter.
And who else?
Justin Isolde.
Who else?
Gabonane.
And who else?
I got Bonnie Porter.
That's right. Do you want to come to this college?
Yes.
Do you like this college?
Yeah, yes.
Do you think this college likes you?
Yeah, yes.
I wanted to thank this board. These teachers in this college have given us the time of day. And my son understands everything. He just can't articulate. And the program has acknowledged that and given us the time of day and has allowed stuff to happen in my son's life that wouldn't have been allowed if it wasn't for these particular individuals in this program, this college. So thank you, and I hope you guys have a rest of your good evening. What do you say?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bonnie Porter Katibbi? Did I say the last name right?
Katibbi.
Katibu. I blew that last time, too. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did it worse this time, though.
Okay.
I just wanted to tell you one thing. I had JJ in one of my classes. It was a watershed class. And Tom asked a question, and nobody else in the classroom, they knew what the answer was. JJ sat there up front, and he had his hand up. And finally, it's like, okay, JJ. It's like, you just knew. It's like, okay, so what are you going to tell us? He had the answer, said it right out, very clear and concise, and we all just like stood there. And finally, everybody started clapping because he got an answer that nobody else was able to come up with. He got it right. He's amazing. I've been at Topson there with him, standing in the snow and looking at trees and everything else and going over things, and he's absolutely amazing. Just wanted to start out with, I started my college journey in 1981 in Oklahoma City while I was in the Air Force. And that was in 1981, and I finished here at 2020. So it's a long college career. I'm back. I'm saddened to hear of all this dissatisfaction in the school. I'm mostly concerned with the forestry and natural resources programs. Facebook and other natural or social networks is how I communicate with other students and instructors and former instructors, who I understand the numbers keep growing. Need for forestry personnel with experience is great. State, federal, and private entities need employees, and Columbia College is letting them down. The program must continue. We need our instructors back, if they will come back. I love what Columbia College has done for me. One thing, it gave me the strength to come to another meeting. I drove two hours to be here because I believe in this program and school. I see people here today who welcomed this old lady to this college. You're one of them, right?
Me?
Yep. From admissions and records? I knew nothing. They said FAFSA, and I said, what? They sat with me every semester and stuff. Every time I had to do paperwork, they sat there, and they were very, very nice to me. And I would look for certain ones each time because I knew they knew my problems with trying to get through the computer systems. I had no clue. So I had to hand it to her and her crew. They were always the nicest people to me. I would have never gotten my FAFSA done, and thanks for them is never-ending. I thank you again for the veterans' space, which has a lot to do with my success. I had a safe space to work, knowing I had security nearby if needed. Every night, I would be up in the veterans' room up there, and I would be there till 10 o'clock each night. And the security guy, he would come by, and we had a signal, whereas the bus driver would come by. Every time he got to there, he would flash his lights at me, and I would stand up, and I would wave to him, let him know that I was okay. And at 10 o'clock, then the security guy would come by and go, okay, you know, it's time to go home now, and I'd go back to wherever I was going to. This college, it means more to me than anybody could ever guess. I just love it here. This is home. And I hope this program can start to pick it back up. It sounds to me like this president needs to go. If the whole school is, is failing because of this, then that's the answer. Obviously she's the common knowledge and she's the common person and it's, it's really sad. This place used to be so welcoming. My first time here, when I walked in, it was like, here, want a sandwich? It's like, I've never been someplace where they handed me a sandwich except for the VA hospital, my very first time, but. You know, VA hospital and the first thing they asked me is, have you eaten today? And I said, no. And they said, here. And they gave me a, gave me a voucher for a meal at the, at the commissary. And here I walked in, I got a sandwich, a bag of chips and a soda. I was like, this is where I want to go to school. And that was before I knew anything about this school. All I knew is I'd been past here once. And I just want to let you all know, this, this is very important. This school, you know, the people here have nowhere else to go. You know, I come from, I come from Fair Play. I come from two hours away, just to come here to go to school. Rain or shine, snow or whatever, I come to school. I go to Columbia, I go to, to Baker Station.
Sorry, your time's up.
And I just, I want to thank you. Thank you all. Keep this school going.
Thank you. Kim Piper? Kim Piper?
And we are live streaming to YouTube and we just received notice that it's hard to hear. So if speakers can speak closer to the mic, that would be great.
Hello. I have worked at Columbia College for 11 years and I have known many of the people here for that length of time or longer. To me, this campus has always been a welcoming place with staff who genuinely, genuinely care about students and each other. Each of us feel honored to go the extra mile to help our students and colleagues succeed. However, during the last two years, under the leadership of President Tran. I have seen colleagues whom I value tremendously. Who have bright, fun-loving spirits become shells of their former selves. This is not an exaggeration. These colleagues try to maintain their high quality of work while at the same time suffering from debilitating mental harms. And as a result of that stress, physical ailments. They dread coming to work. And to see our campus environment devolve into a climate of fear is alarming. In addition, experiencing the loss of administrator after administrator. Their exits hastened by unacceptable working conditions. Feels like the foundation of our college is being kicked out from under us, brick by brick. In the past, when I have spoken to the board on different topics through emails. I have always felt like my comments and concerns are valued. I truly appreciate that. Thank you for being approachable and willing to listen. Today I hope my voice can amplify the thoughts of those at the college who feel too afraid to speak up. Together, we want to respectfully implore the board to investigate this matter fully. With an aim to restoring the health and well-being of Columbia College. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any more cards, but is there anyone that didn't fill out a card that would like to speak? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Moving on, item 3.8, approval of minutes. Have motions to approve? Second, please.
My second's the motion.
Trustee Hinton and Nicolau. Call, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now we're going to move on to board committee reports. Committee Chair Garrett, you're up.
So the, uh, finance committee met yesterday, um, and in attendance with myself and, and trustee Aguilar. Unfortunately, our learned colleague here had a, a family medical emergency and could not attend at the last minute, but he was there in spirit. Um, so we went over the customary items, but I want to highlight the, the hard work that everybody is doing first with, with the budget. Uh, you know, we, we do see challenges ahead. Uh, we'll all know more, uh, when the revise comes out and what the governor's final budget is for. For community colleges, but, but we need to recognize the hard work that the, the colleges are doing to prepare us to meet the needs of our students into the future. Um, we had a, a presentation on the, uh, student debt or student accounts receivable. And the, the district and the respective colleges are making progress in that area and I want to commend them for that. We had probably the highlight of the meeting was a full-time equivalent student update. Uh, both colleges are just knocking it out of the park. Uh, it, it cannot be emphasized enough. Uh, the, the tremendous amount of work that both colleges are doing to attract and retain, uh, the students. And obviously that's a reflection of. Staff, faculty, classified professionals, everybody involved to retain those students. And I want to thank them for that. And then, um. On the agenda tonight, I think we're on the agenda tonight for the dorms, for the dorm update. And I just want to tell everybody up here. We recognize and have always recognized what a tremendous asset, uh, the dorms are for Columbia College. Particularly for the various programs and for the students in the area that, that have challenges when it comes to, to housing. So we fully support, uh, a program to where we rehabilitate those dorms, make them better. And, and come up with a plan so we can make constant improvements and, and meet the needs of those, those students. So you'll hear that. Tonight, but I want to emphasize that this board supports that. And coming up with, with a budget, both in the short term and the long term to, to, uh, you know, provide for our students and their, and their housing. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Board Policy Committee Chair, Hinton?
We had our last meeting of the current year on Monday. And it was a, turned out to be a rather short meeting, which was good because we started it late. But, um, our next meeting will be in October and, uh. We appreciate those that have continued to support us by showing up and giving us the feedback that we've, uh, requested. And, uh, look forward to a great year. And can I go ahead on the?
Please.
The next, um. Part of this features on the, um. JTPA, which is the Joint Powers of. Um, insurance and stuff because we're a self-insured program. This was my first meeting on that. And I learned a lot and it was, um, very, very interesting and. To think of some of them that if you think over the last few years, some incidents on workers' comp or something, you know, where. Somebody got injured or there was an incident. Well, we're self-insured, so we cover all the cost. And, um. It's amazing on some of them, how much they cost. And then to know that we're doing a really good fruiting job on everything and. We're in the black and we're working well and, uh, we're looking to the future. And I really learned a lot on that pro, and that program.
Thank you. Trustee Beggs, Modesto Junior College Foundation Report, please.
Uh, I just have a short report because, um, we meet every other month and I'm not part of the finance committee, which meant Tuesday, I think. As part of the MJC Foundation, that finance committee. Um. So, uh, what the director, uh, told me was she said, uh, she's going to be spending the summer, this is Emily Lawrence, will be spending the summer working on policies. She's doing a full review of all the donor files and she's continuing to build the granting profile to help programs at MJC. That's it.
Thank you. Dr. Davis, you have two reports, Columbia College Foundation and Association of Stanislaus County School Boards.
Well, thank you. So might remember last month I shared, uh, some data with you regarding, uh. The persistence rates of Columbia College students and the, uh, difference in the rates between those who are promised. Students and those who are not. And, and, uh, it's. Last Friday, we had our graduation here and, uh, to further that commentary, there was, raise your hand if you're a promised student. There at the graduation. And from my perspective, it looked like a majority of students. Charles, I know you were there and you got to see that. And so there's something we're just very proud of, uh, in the foundation and the work they do to provide those promised scholarships to, to our students. And the way that they stick to it and complete their degrees and certificates and, and the rest. Our next meeting actually is. Coming up, uh, 21st of May. So I'll have more to report after we have that meeting. Regarding the Association of Stanislaus County School Boards, the annual dinner was April 24th. Uh, all the school boards, Stanislaus County and the college district, uh, were invited to attend. Uh, in attendance. With me was also trustee Beggs and Chancellor Yom. And the, um, keynote speaker that night was Kevin Gordon, the executive director of Capital Advisors. And, uh, he's pretty well-known throughout the state, um, for the work that he does in Sacramento to, uh, advocate for public education. Uh, keep his and his organization's fingers on the pulse of, of legislation, policy, and of course the budget. And we received from him. Sort of an update of where the budget stands, which as he, he shared is still. Depends who you talk to, whether it's a legislative annulus office or the, the governor's office and, um. But what his message really was to the group was so far, the governor's message is, um. Education, including community colleges, doesn't want to see any cuts coming our way. Um, and that's going to be, uh, a, a heavy lift considering the condition of the state, um, revenues. But he shared, he shared that out and, uh, with us all. That's an annual dinner. If you can make it next year, that would be great. Our next meeting is May 10th. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to presentations. The first presentation is for, from the Columbia College Outreach and Retention.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? I hope you're doing well. And you want me to, oh, I have the clicker. Okay, thank you.
This is good. We wanted to hear about Starfish. We've been talking about this for a while.
Yes, yes. And we, um, in addition to what my job actually is in higher education, which I get a lot, like what do you actually do, Courtney, as outreach and retention? The second question I get is what is Starfish? That is the second most popular question I get in my current position. Um, and I'm happy to, to have this opportunity to talk about what Starfish is. Um, so you, here at Columbia, my best answer to what Starfish is. Is a communication platform with our students at the center while creating a personalized success, success network of counselors, faculty and support staff for each student. So this is truly a student platform that is all focused around them and creating a success network that they can connect with 24/7. And have a clear path, connection, um, and opportunity. So that is what Starfish is. And from, to give it a little bit of a historical perspective, we purchased the product as a district, you helped purchase that. Um, back in 2016 and we started to work with our implementation team and some consultants, both at the Columbia College. And MJC level. In 2018, after years of work with our implementation teams, we were able to launch our first progress survey. And start to implement degree planning. So for our counselors, that really meant taking a PDF, a document. And putting it somewhere that it lived online, that students could access 24/7 with clear paths of which class to take in which semester. And they could access that whenever they wanted. Prior to this, they had to come see me when I worked as the counseling technician at that desk over there. And if I wasn't at that desk over there, they couldn't get their degree plan, right? So this was a huge access point for our students. And then where I think we were really able to leverage our tool was in 2020 when COVID hit. So we were able to leverage Starfish as a way to not only communicate with students from different services and programs. But also start to schedule appointments with counselors, financial aid and other services while remote, right? And so this was huge for us. And this was where we, a lot of services could see the capability. So in 2022 and 2023, we saw our highest participation with both individual use at either that being students, faculty or staff. And then currently we've, I would say, hmm, exploded, um, and have 38, um, services active in Starfish. We have six flags, three kudos, 19 referrals, 15 to-dos. One student intake survey, four kiosks, two progress surveys per semester for fall and spring. And that is all maintained just with our campus on, at Columbia College. So that's to give a little bit of a history of how far we've come, um, with Starfish. And I went the wrong way. Sorry, Graciela. So the three main features of this product that we get, like I mentioned, are degree planning. So it's that tool to create and manage course plans semester by semester. And monitor our, uh, the progress and completion. We also have early alert. So this early alert package is a way for us to give feedback in real time. From instructors or staff on students on how they're doing, whether that be a kudo, you're doing great, keep it up. Or low participation, we'd love to see you more, or you're in danger of failing. Um, and so we're able to leverage their student success network and do wraparound services when these flags are raised. So when a flag is raised, that counselor that's connected to that student is going to know, the faculty member is going to know, that, that support network will know. Um, and within Connect, we're also using appointment scheduling, the kiosks, which helps students drop into appointments or be managed as they're coming in and seeing services and tracking that data. And then also through connecting with faculty through their office hours, we're able to track that as well and provide that ability to connect. So a little bit more about our degree planner. It is our main academic counselor's tool. As I've mentioned, students have access to it 24/7. And it's, it's a way for students to go on and explore any pathway that they might like. So they can go on and play and put classes in this semester or that semester and then have it approved through communication with a counselor, either in person or remotely. Um. Remotely too. And that also is a way to help our students follow through with their degree plan with their matriculation credit, whether that be, um, math and English placement. And then also helping communicate with our financial aid staff so they can see that they're on a payable program, that they're making progress and that we're retaining them. So again, these wraparound services that we all have access to this information is really key. Um, this is kind of a snippet of what, what the degree plan kind of looks like for the student on the right. And then just to highlight how many academic programs we have at Columbia College is amazing. And that's a lot of work for us to maintain with those degree plans, but so worth it. Because students feel to see their paths and to explore that is really, um, we're, we're really are leveraging that. So tracking items, like I mentioned, is a way for a kudo, a student to get a kudo. And right now, when students don't get kudos, you hear them saying, well, I haven't gotten a kudo. You got a kudo. So they really do have these conversations. Um, and then the flags are really a great opportunity to keep students on track. Um, so like I mentioned, we have some that are low participation. We've also created some that were in the moment. One really successful one that we used during COVID, which we don't use now as much. Was the technology assistance needed. So if they needed to know how to use Canvas off the bat, or they didn't know that we had laptops for free. We were able to adjust and pivot and use this tool in a way that made sense in the moment. And now that one is not, is not as much necessary, but. Our general concern flag is being increased more. Um, so that's the way that we're able to pivot and also continue to use the tool. Um, and it's been really good. Referrals is my most popular with my campus services. So, um, services, when you want to get a student connected to your service, you can create a referral with me. And then faculty, staff and even our student workers can raise those referrals and get a student connected to a financial aid specialist themselves, a new program. Um, and again, the most useful part about the referral is that hopefully on the other end of that referral is a callback, right? It's not just putting it on the student. It's somebody calling and saying, somebody referred you to us. It's an, and it, and it's us doing that phone call back. So the referrals are really powerful. Um, the to-do is more on the student. Hey, did you know it's time to register? Did you know it's time to complete your promise application? Those are the types of things that we have in there and those are ways that we're helping retain our students and keeping them on track. I've done really well with Canva and infographics. So this is just a way for me to share my skills and how far I've come. Okay? My favorite is the Mario. I really, I personally really loved my Mario one. Um, so. When I talk about progressory, so I've gone to every academic senate meeting this summer, this year actually. And I have talked about Starfish every time, even when it hasn't been an agenda item. Every time, every time. Um, and so the progress survey is really just a, they'll, I hope they would, I wish they would all say this.
But are you a senator?
A pretty, no, uh, is a pretty package of the tracking items easily for the faculty member to complete. So it's set up per course for them to give faculty, uh, to give feedback just on those students in their class. Um, so it's just a nice way to hopefully deliver it to them. So it's just a nice way to hopefully deliver it to them seamlessly. We also are starting to create success plans, which are similar and not just based on course, but could be for, the one that we launched this year is our Financial Literacy, Financial Wellness Plan. And so it's giving students to-dos that we think will help them be successful with financial wellness if they complete these. And again, we have program assistants who are dedicated to finding out where they are in this financial plan, right? And we're going to work towards more of them, I promise. Annika, you will get one, I promise. Connect. So Connect is the piece that allows us to schedule appointments, manage kiosks, create office hours for our faculty, and then notes. So notes, again, it's all about that wraparound service. Without being able to share the information on the student with each other, we're not going to be able to get the student where they need to be at the fastest pace. Also, we don't want students to have to tell the same story over and over again. And a lot of times when they get to a window, they say, I'm not sure why I'm here, but somebody told me to come here. And so they laugh because they know that's true. And so when they get there, we're able to pull that up and say, you're here because you are, you're needing to complete that appeal. So the notes, all of these things can also be set by privileges and permissions, right? So I mentioned student workers. Their permissions and privileges look really different than mine as the caretaker of Starfish, right? Like I have admin, administrative rights versus a faculty member. So all of this is personalized and permission-based. So what's to come? We are going to be implementing texting as a way to keep our students informed of their appointments and the kudos and flags, which can all be customized messages. So it's not going to be the same email, right? The text isn't going to look the same. It will be customized and a little bit different of a way to alert the student. They're going to get a new dashboard, which most students at other colleges are very excited about. So we're excited to launch that on May 15th. And then we've reconnected with our implementation team at MJC. And we hope that that will also bring more, help us leverage the tool in all the ways possible. So with EAB, there's lots of new packages that we can try and purchase. And so if MJC's implementation team is interested in those, it helps us as a district leverage those. And one of the first things out of that MJC connection and teamwork is that we are improving the ticket system on what issues we are seeing with Starfish. And so this will allow, I think, an even better, which I hope IT is somewhere listening to me, we hope that this improved ticketing system will help our IT as well. And so without IT, Starfish, we need IT support a lot of times to help Starfish work to its highest capability. So I appreciate everything IT does for us. So what's now? So we're continuing to integrate into campuses, integrate between campuses. Individuals and employees connect with their implementation team if you have questions. And then as an implementation team, we're continuing to work with our EAB consultant and to leverage this tool for student success. Do you have any questions for me?
First, does any member of the public have a question or a comment? Thank you. Trustees, trustee Nicolau.
Perfect transition. Courtney, I'm Jenny. You rock this presentation. So very good. Raise your hand. I'd like to do a little audience interaction. Raise your hand if you have used Starfish. Okay, now listen, you have three choices. So keep your hands up. Down, not the best. Neutral, you can't pick and you don't want to hurt my feelings. Thumbs up, positive experience. Okay, thank you for your honesty.
Any other questions on the board? Thank you very, go ahead, Nancy.
That presentation was wonderful. And the active, interactive participation with trustee Nicolau helped us more than you will ever know because it shows us that you guys like it and you're using it. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I'm going to deviate from the agenda. We have one of our distinguished faculty members here who has a crazy schedule. So chancellor Young, I think you have a presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Richards. I want to recognize Chad Redwing. He's a faculty at the MJC, but he lives up in Sonora. And this evening, he's here. All of you know that he was very gracious and kind in serving as the interim MJC president while the college went through a presidential search. So we had not given him a token of appreciation tonight. And with specific reference to Faculty Appreciation Week, I would like to present him a very small token of sincere appreciation. Dr. Redwing.
I thought we were getting a car. Would you like to say anything, Dr. Redwing?
Just very quickly, yeah, I had a great year at MJC last year in a leadership role. I want to thank you all for the opportunity. As you know, I thank much of our team as I left and went back to the classroom at the end of the year. But there's, many of you are directly responsible for the opportunity I had last year. But there's one person here who never gets thanked who's here tonight. So I'd like to thank my wife, Marionella. Wow. So if you know me, she was the real president at MJC last year.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, the next presentation will be Columbia College Student Housing Update.
So I'm going to run through a presentation that I've shared first with.
I thought we were going to get somebody.
I know, no dynamic, sorry. No great, no great characters like Courtney had. So maybe she can present it next time. But we've presented this to DFAC, also shared it with Board Finance, knowing that in the interest of time, I want to go a little bit quicker as it relates to this. So most of the words are on the screen. I normally don't do that. But again, I knew in the interest of time, we wanted to do that. We have on this campus, I think it's a total of five buildings. Four of them are residential, where the students live, 48 units, 192 total beds that are approaching 40 years old. And we have ownership that reverts to the district in August of 2024. So for the seven years that I've been part of this district, I've been either dreading or looking forward to this date. And now we are really doing a lot of work, not only here at the college, but also down at Central Services as it relates to this transition. What we are currently evaluating, working with our attorneys, is what we are calling an early termination agreement. The idea that if we wait till August 17th, how are we then going to recruit students to be part of that housing program? And so by switching to a termination agreement at the end of May, early June, we will have the opportunity to then plan and work with students to recruit and get them signed up and to be part of our campus. And so we are hoping to have that completed in the next week or so with the attorneys and then work with the current operator of the dorms and get that completed. We're also working on what was presented to the board in the past. What type of ownership do we want to have? And we did actually spend a lot of time working with the Columbia College Foundation to evaluate, is that something that we can maybe have them do? In the short term, it's been the recommendation of Carrie Rasmussen, who was our counsel, that to not put at risk the endowment associated with the foundation, that for the short term, we work directly through the college. And that is the direction, and district, that's the direction we're going now. It doesn't prevent in the future, the opportunity of adjusting the auxiliary so that we can have the foundation be a bigger participant than they will be. We are evaluating two different vendors. We're looking at the pros and cons of each. And we're working both with A.Skip and again, our attorney firm as it relates to contract language. As part of taking over the dorms, the 40-year-old contract really wasn't written well enough to protect the district as it relates to the condition of the facilities. And so we have a facility that is 40 years old with 40-year-old windows and with 40-year-old problems. So we had to look at what are the items and currently look at, what are the items that are of immediate concern and what are those long-term concerns going to be? So we had a company come out and do a facility condition assessment. And we also had them look at ADA. So we'll be addressing both of those over the next couple of slides. I want to point out that that bottom bullet point in the tentative budget that I'll be presenting to the board next month, I have included a number of $1 million coming out of reserves, so not out of the operating budget, to assist with the immediate needs, including ADA. After I started to evaluate the reports, and we've now gotten the second ADA report to come in, I think by the time we get to the final budget, we're going to have to evaluate that number being $2 million. The way that the rental agreement works with the student, the student pays the revenue and we collect that revenue. But we, as the keeper of those funds, have to determine how much of that is going to pay operating costs. The employees that are working, the utilities, the insurance associated with it. We also need to set aside dollars for the current repairs and maintenance and also for the long-term capital needs of the facility. But what we need to do in the bullet above is to be able to provide the college with clean, neat and in good operating order for students, this facility, as we roll into August. And so it's important that we do set aside some one-time dollars to assist the college with getting those facilities repaired. They are 40 years old. So quickly, I'll run you through the facility condition assessment. They identified, again, immediate through long-term needs. You see the total cost of about 7.2 million. The immediate needs they had identified at 672,000. I already mentioned that we've done two different ADA assessments. This one was a little more quick, the numbers that you have up on the screen. But we have contracted and actually now have received the report of a full unit-by-unit ADA assessment. And that one, this one came in at a million, the other one came in around $800,000. But as we're looking through the costs, we realize that we know what the cost is to repair a bathroom versus what they put into their report as a cost to repair a bathroom. So just like anything, we can't do all 172 pages, other recommended changes. We're going to have to identify, what do we need to do to get students in there immediately? And what can we continue to do each and every time we're making improvements to the facility? And so it's these two reports that are leading me to believe, to provide the college with a condition, a facility in good condition, that we may have to increase that number up to $2 million. The college is already doing a lot of this work as it relates to marketing. They, we've established a email where students that have questions can submit that. We have a website that is being geared up to then start taking the applications from students as it relates to renting for a term or the entire year. And again, Columbia has been doing a lot of this work themselves. And so I'm appreciative of everyone that's been assisting here locally as it relates to being prepared for next fiscal year. The vendor that's been assisting us, the Volz Company, have been having conversations about what should rents look like for next year for students. And they've taken into consideration the current rents from the vendor that's operating it, had conversations with them, even had conversations here on campus. And the recommendation that we're moving forward with is that we will keep the rents the same for the 24, 25 fiscal year. So this ends up being, again, this fabulous asset that is already here on this campus. And although we've worked well with the current vendor, when it becomes a Columbia College asset for them to deal with, I'm really looking forward to what they can do to make it even better for students.
Thank you, Trevor. Any members of the public have any questions? Seeing that, how about board? Any questions? Comments? Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll get into association reports. And we'll start with the leadership team, Academy Council, Laura Mackey. Is Laura here? Okay, moving on. My favorite, Brian Green.
Don't, I don't usually go first, do I, or second?
Well, we have to. Yeah, we mix up the order.
I just picked up on that. Good evening, trustees, President Richards and Chancellor Young. Before I get to my regular report, I would like to acknowledge the comments made by my Columbia College colleagues tonight. They expressed a range of concerns that I know you take seriously. I'm glad that the constituency groups are working with President Tran and the district to find solutions. I have a good relationship with President Tran and have appreciated her support and collaboration on a variety of YFA issues. I certainly hope we can work through those shared tonight. I also want to reiterate that the unions are available to help if you or someone you know has been treated unfairly. And that's for the folks in the audience. Now to the report I plan to give. This past month has seen a flurry of activity. On top of graduation and the usual end of semester celebrations, we were able to reach agreement on closing out this round of negotiations. As you no doubt know, this includes tentative agreements covering more than a dozen articles, from minor formatting changes to more substantial changes to the contract. Taken together, this is a strong agreement that makes notable progress on key goals shared by YFA and the district. Perhaps most importantly is the agreement to finally make progress towards pay parity for part-time and overload assignments. While we still have a ways to go, the initial pay increase and ongoing commitment are significant improvements. Along with our recent MOU for part-time faculty health benefits, we have demonstrated a shared recognition for the critical role that hundreds of part-time faculty play in serving students throughout the district. Other areas of the agreement are also notable for their significance. A new large lecture incentive that honors the extra work involved for faculty who take on additional students in their classes. Eliminating the Step 12 cap on the full-time salary schedule, which disproportionately impacted CTE instructors. Strengthening the sabbatical leave requirements and increasing sabbatical pay. Reframing the non-instructional work week to align with instructional faculty and focus on the professionalism of all faculty. I could go on. In short, I see this agreement as great news for YCCD, for faculty and for students. Just as notable as the final agreements themselves is how it all came together. We've been actively negotiating for 18 months. While progress wasn't always linear, I appreciate the professionalism and dedication of all of the negotiation team members from both YFA and the district. Each and everyone involved put in a huge amount of time and energy, for which I am grateful. I look forward to working with everyone again in the next round. I would like to close by thanking the board for the resolution in support of Faculty Appreciation Week on tonight's agenda. Faculty are, of course, critical for student success and learning, and recognizing our contributions this way is very much appreciated. This concludes my report. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Classified Senate Activities Report. Amanda Cannon?
I received an email from her and from Laura Mackey that they will not be giving a report tonight.
How about Sandra Smith? Are you here? Please come up. She's the Columbia College Academic Senate President.
Classified Senate, yeah.
Classified Senate.
Good evening. I just have a brief report. We have a few things coming up with our group. We're having our retreat on June 13th up at Baker Station. So we're really excited about that. We also have implemented a new thing this year with our staff for professional development, doing lunch and learns. So we're able to invite them to lunch, we're paying for their lunch and we're going over different topics. And so the last one that we had, well, it was our first one, actually, we had was about participatory governance and about what our role is as Classified Senate. We touched a little bit on what the difference is between the union and the Senate, just so people would understand. We have a lot of newer employees too that may not understand all those things. So it was really a good time. Everybody said they learned a lot at that presentation. So we're going to do another one in July. And this one's going to kind of be a little bit more fun for summer. We're going to kind of do a walk around. We're going to kind of do a walk around the campus and kind of learn about the physicality of our campus. We have a few staff members that are going to, you know, teach us about the different trees around and the different uh, parts of our campus. So we can learn some about that. And then we also are really excited about, we're starting to do a collaboration with our academic senate. And just so we can kind of be a more cohesive team on the campus. So we're going to join them in their retreat this year in August. So we're really excited about that too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move to the Student Senate Activity Report. We don't have any from from Modesto Junior College, but is Alexander Jukes?
So I am not Alexander Jukes.
Okay, I didn't think so.
However, uh, I am Ashley Escolera. I am the Vice President of the Associated Students.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed members of the Board of Trustees. I am thrilled to have this opportunity to share with you the incredible strides our student leadership teams have made in enriching the student experience here at Columbia College. As a student leader deeply invested in our campus community, it brings me immense joy to report on our recent initiatives and events. Firstly, our brand new duck duck goose scavenger hunt that took place in the beginning of April. Uh, has proved.
Really duck duck goose? That's pretty good. I want to see the poster.
It, uh, as you can tell, was an absolute sensation captivating participants with exciting challenges and delightful surprises. Not only to our students, but faculty and staff members who were included as well. Uh, the event attracted a bustling crowd, igniting an atmosphere of enthusiasm and adventure that resonated throughout the day. And of course, till the end of semester. Secondly, our donut stress ve- event, which is a much anticipated tradition of our campus. It's the midst of finals exams of deadlines. We recognize the importance of providing our peers with a moment of respite and relaxation. Our team organized a delightful morning where students could enjoy donuts and coffee, offering them a brief escape from their academic pressures as they prepare for finals. Uh, I'm also excited to share the success of our recent cram night event, which was also partnered with our Academic Achievement Center and Library. We provided food as well as trivia games for students to win some study supplies. Creating an engaging and supporting environment for them to review course materials and prepare for exams. These events are just a glimpse into the dedication and creativity of our student leaders in enhancing campus life. By pri- prioritizing the wellbeing and academic success of our peers. We strive to create a nurturing and inclusive environment where every student can thrive. It has also been a year of growth and success for our clubs and continuous support. Following the Associate Students of Columbia College elections, the focus shifts towards facilitating a smooth transition between our outgoing and incoming presidents. The newly elected president, who happens to be here, and their team will embark on a comprehensive orientation process.
Please come up so we can see you.
You also have an introduction from the next uh, next meeting as well. But this could be as Harrison. Um, and their team will embark on a comprehensive orientation process, immersing themselves in the responsibilities, projects and initiatives of their predecessor. Oh, big words. Thank you. This is why you're president. Um, I would also like to take a moment to recognize our graduates from this past year. Uh, including our President Alexander Jukes and our Director of Club Affairs, Nathaniel Winans, and everything they have done for the ASCC in this past year. I, in closing, I also want to express my gratitude to the Board of Trustees for your ongoing support of student, oh my goodness, student leadership initiatives. Your belief in our vision and commitment to empowering student voices are instrumental in shaping the future of our institution. As you understand that we are made by the students and for the students. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Okay, California School Employees Association President Patrick Krebs.
Good evening, President Richards, Chancellor Young and fellow trustees. First and foremost, CSEA would like to acknowledge the faculty and teachers that make such a positive impact here at YCCD, as well as the teachers that are in our feeder school and shape the students as they grow. Uh, this month's board report unfortunately will have to do with the general climate at MJC Central Services and Columbia College. CSEA leadership has been receiving complaints of frustration with the district administration. Topic, topics include lack of transparency, lack of understanding of the challenges that classified professionals have been struggling with and communication from the district administration. Although some of these items are not violations of our contract, they are impacting classified negatively day to day. CSEA leadership brought some of these working environment concerns forward in our EER meetings over the last year. After ongoing discussions in April of this year, CSEA leadership formally asked the district to create a district wide climates, a set climate assessment to give employees an avenue to anonymously provide feedback on the district's work environment at Columbia, MJC and Central Services. This would provide district with data for the areas that classified perceive the district as excelling in or areas that need improvement. During May's EER, CSEA leadership asked for a response to our request to the district wide climate survey. The response conveyed to CSEA was that the district was not interested in conducting a climate survey, but would like to move forward with a professional development survey. A climate survey and a professional development survey are very different topics. Human resources and CSEA leadership are already in the planning phase to conduct a professional development series. We appreciate the additional professional development survey to better understand the professional growth of classified. This type of survey would likely not give classified the avenue to provide such feedback that CSEA believes would help the district identify the true climate assessment of employees. CSEA sincerely hopes that the board, the Chancellor Young and his executive cabinet take these concerns seriously. The board should know that CSEA stands with classified professionals who exercise their right to address you tonight and those who couldn't. CSEA continues to encourage anyone with questions working on working conditions to reach out to their respective unions. I can't stress this enough. CSEA and its members want YCCD to be the best it can be. We want good growth. Sometimes that takes hard conversations. This concludes my report. Does the board have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Columbia College Academic Senate President Marcus Wiznet. We missed your dinner tonight.
What's that?
We missed your student dinner. We know they're gone, they're away, but we missed.
Done, right? Yeah. Yeah, my colleague Chef Don teaches that class. But I mean, it's all, it's all good. Lunch, remember lunch starting next semester on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So um, good evening, everybody. Um, just a couple of um, quick notes from the academic senate. Thank you for um, hearing us on these. Couple of things really quick. Thank you very much to trustees Aguilar and Davis. Thank you, Henry, for attending the graduation the other day. It was really neat. It was a good time um, going out there. I got to give a speech and that was very nerve wracking. I'm a ham in class, but I don't really like to uh, speak in front of crowds. So I think that that um, what's that, could have fooled up. Yeah, so I think that uh, worked out pretty well. It was really nice. So thank you. Thank you all for attending that. We wanted also to thank Courtney Sutton and her team for graduation. Um, little side note, I love Starfish, but uh, Courtney really does a good job with graduation and that. And also uh, the academic senate would like to thank Casey Folkerson for the end of year picnic. That was really nice as well. So that's um, kudos from the academic senate. Um, so we're at a little bit of a, it's, it's kind of a tough time around here and as you've heard. And um, me as the academic senate voice, I need to voice the concerns of the senate. And this is where the senate stands with our campus climate right now. We had sent a letter to Dr. Tran regarding the actual campus climate. And um, thank you, Henry, for following up with a meeting with her on that. And so academic senate wise, we feel that, that, that we are following the correct steps and, and that, that we are, and we are hoping that Dr. Tran listens to these steps. She has not really um, improved in our eyes as an academic senate, but we hope that she is trying. We would like to um, also talk about the meeting that we had with Henry, Eric, who is Vice President and myself. Thank you again, Henry, for, for the meetings. Um, we know that you are doing your best on getting this, this, you know, this uh, process rolling. Um, lastly, the academic senate authorized me to write a letter to the board members right now. And I hope you receive that. We have not heard anything from you. We're not demanding anything. But we would like some prompt, some prompt answers on the next steps when it does come to this campus climate. Um, we understand that we have unions that we can go to. We understand that there are other things that we can go to as well. But the overall campus climate has always been an agenda item this past year as me being academic senate president. So enjoy your summer. Thank you very much. And uh, we look forward to um, hearing from you all. Thank you.
Next item, Chancellor Young.
Thank you, Dr. Richards. This evening, there are no college reports. Uh, Dr. Tran uh, left earlier uh, due to a family uh, emergency. Uh, Dr. Sanders is at the faculty retreat at the Asoloma. And so he's not here. Uh, I want to uh, mention that Columbia College is making a presentation at the ACCJC conference. And this is a big deal because uh, Columbia College and MJC are both pioneer colleges with the new accreditation standards. And the fact that they are able to present at a statewide conference to share uh, insights and knowledge with other colleges, that's wonderful. And just to give you some updates. We have a Senior Director of Institutional Research who started on May first. Uh, she will be spending her time divided at Central Services, MJC and Columbia College. So she will come up here too, to work together as a unit of institutional research for the whole district. Also, we will soon have a Director of Information Security. You heard about other colleges and even municipal agencies being hacked, cyber attacks. And so far, we have been fortunate that it hasn't happened to us. The state chancellor's office has provided funds for colleges to uh, prevent uh, these sorts of intrusions. And uh, we will have someone in that position very soon. So that's the good news. And last but not least, uh, we will soon have a Vice Chancellor of IT and IR. So that will be on the next month's agenda. You will see his name. So at long last, we have found someone. Next. Classified School Employees Week. Tonight, many of them were here and we know the amount of work that classified staff carry out day to day. And most of the time, we do not thank them enough. I want to announce uh, some events. It is a very humble way to show our thanks to the classified staff. On Tuesday, May twenty first, at eight PM, we're going to uh, have a little uh, session, call it the appreciation session with our custodial staff, MJC East Campus. Then also on the twenty first, at nine thirty PM, we will have another appreciation session again for the custodial staff who work at night at MJC West. That's the second event of the same day. The next day, the twenty second, at ten AM, in the staff dining room, MJC East Campus, we hope to show our appreciation and thanks to the CSEA staff uh, who will be available during the day shift, right? Now, May twenty third. How can we forget Columbia? We'll be here from ten to eleven AM. Upper Menzanita Staff Lounge. If you're classified, please come by and allow me and my staff to thank you. And then, one to two PM, last but not least, at the district office. The district uh, office for MJC and uh, West Campus together will have another uh, appreciation session. So that's for classified. And we have already mentioned about Faculty Appreciation Week. I would be remiss if I don't add this to my report. Professor Lindsay uh, Laney was recognized as the Teacher of the Year from Columbia College from uh, what, what's Wollome County? Right? So uh, on behalf of all the faculty that you represent, uh, I just want to express my appreciation. And since this is Faculty Appreciation Week is proper, that I acknowledge your contribution to our students and to the district. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Five point five travel report is enclosed just for your review. Now we'll move on to six consent items. Is there anybody, member of the public wishing to pull or question any consent items? Seeing none? How about the board? Anybody want to pull or? You have something?
I do have a correction. So on item six point thirteen, which is the consent agenda personnel, the list, um, personnel transaction items listed on page two of three. The resignation for Ashley Kipple should read from the College of MJC, not Columbia College as listed.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve consent?
No, moved.
Second. Motion by Trustee Nicolau, seconded by Trustee Hinton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seeing none.
Mr. Board President, may I?
You may.
Hey, it's customary for us at this moment to recognize those who are retiring from the district. And I'd like to, pardon me, Mike, as you get older, you know, you, you have more glasses than you thought you ever would. So um, anyway, um, Raylene Juarez, nineteen years of service, Dean of Arts Science and Human Performance, Art Science and Human Performance at Columbia College. I want to thank uh, Raylene for her years of service and, and guiding that department. I'm sure she started out as a faculty member and had a great impact on a number of students and then had a great impact on, on her faculty team in, in guiding that, that department. And I, and I wish her well in, in her retirement. Uh, Miriam Medina, twenty five years of service, Program Specialist, Community Lifelong Learning, Workforce Development, MJC. You know, we always hear about our, our community um, lifelong learning uh, department. And uh, you know, it's one of those things we get told, don't ever touch it, right? It's the third rail of, of MJC. So uh, there's a tremendous amount of work that goes into servicing or making sure services are provided to the community and lifelong learning. And I want to thank Miriam for her years of service and wish her well in, in retirement. Nora Sarah Neal, uh, Director of Center of Excellence, Center of Excellence, MJC. I wish her well in, in after fifteen and a half years in, in uh, retirement. Shelley Stevens, twenty years of service, Food Service Coordinator, Auxiliary Services, MJC. Um, probably one of the top unsung heroes of, of the Modesto Junior College and making sure that the needs, the. Probably one of the top unsung heroes of, of the Modesto Junior College and making sure that the needs, the nutritional needs of the students are met. And she did that for, for 28 years. And thank, thank her for her years of service and wish her well in retirement. And last, Raquel, uh, I'm bad with names.
Tiscanaro.
Huh?
Tiscanaro.
There you go. Thank you. 23 years of service, auxiliary service manager, auxiliary services. I'm sure that she and Shelley worked, worked together at MJC in providing the, the needs, nutritional needs of our students. And she did that for, for 23 years. And I want to thank her deeply, uh, for doing that and wish her well in retirement. And with that, I conclude.
Thank you very much. Moving on, we have another, uh, 7.1 Modesto Junior College and Career Access Pathway partnership agreement, this time with Riverbank. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, trustee Aguilar. Second.
I'll second.
Trustee begs, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Moving on, uh, 7.2, uh, Skibs.
Good evening, Board President Richards, trustees and Chancellor Young. Before you are five policies that are up for a second reading and board approval. The board policy committee is recommending that the board pull policy 3530 and approve the remaining four policies as presented in the agenda. Policy 3530 will be brought back for a second reading in the fall. If there are any questions, I can answer them prior to the board's discussion and action on this item.
Seeing no questions, motion to approve. Trustee Hinton. Second by trustee begs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great.
Can I just make note of, uh, the, the not being present for trustee Nicolau?
Gotcha. Okay, 7.4 is, uh, stenographer. I understand you have comments about 7.4.
7.3, uh, president.
See, I always have to do that at least once. How could I skip the most important one? Uh, we have a motion to approve, uh, Faculty Appreciation Week. Do I have a trustee begs first? Trustee Garrett is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes. Now you're up.
Okay, 7.4 is the approval of employment contract for Vice President of Student Services, Columbia College, pursuant to government code 53262 before the board can take action on an item regarding the salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes vice president. The key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes. The key terms of this agreement are as follows. One, the term shall be from July 1, 2024 through June 30th of 2026. The contract reflects an annual salary of $210,823. However, the board approved an increase to the salary schedule for this position at its April 2024 meeting. Therefore, the annual salary will be $222,022 effective July 1 of 2024. Number three fringe benefits include health, dental and vision insurance, income protection insurance, $50,000 of life insurance policy, district leadership team longevity pay, job related expenses and travel reimbursement. So the board will need to motive, motion to ratify employment contract for Columbia College Vice President of Student Services.
Have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'm moved to approve this contract.
Trustee Davis, trustee Hinton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, 7.5 approval employment contract for Vice President of College Administrative Services at MJC.
So item 7.5 is approval of employment contract for VP, Vice President of College Administrative Services, Modesto Junior College, pursuant to government code 53262 before the board can take any action on an item regarding the salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes vice president. The key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes. The key terms of this agreement are as follows. The term shall be from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026. The contract reflects an annual salary of $210,823. However, the board approved an increase to the salary schedule for this position at its April 2024 meeting. Therefore, the annual salary will be $222,022 effective July 1 of 2024. Fringe benefits include health, dental and vision insurance, income protection insurance, $50,000 life insurance policy, district leadership team longevity pay, job related expenses and travel reimbursement. The board needs a motion to ratify employment contract for the MJC President of Col- College Administrative Services.
Trustee Nicolau, motion to approve, but I have a second.
Second.
Trustee Garrett, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Should this next one say Columbia Junior College? Or it's the same one? Okay. 7.6.
7.6 is the approval of employment contract for Vice President of Student Services, Modesto Junior College, pursuant to government code 53262 before the board can take any, can take action on an item regarding the salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes vice president. The key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes. The key terms of this agreement are as follows. One, the term shall be from September 1, 2024 through June 30th of 2026. Two, the contract reflects an annual salary of $210,823. However, the board approved an increase to the salary schedule for this position at its April 2024 meeting. Therefore, the annual salary will be $222,022 effective September 1st of 2024. Fringe benefits include health, dental and vision insurance, income protection insurance, $50,000 life insurance policy, district leadership team longevity pay, job related expenses and travel reimbursement. A motion is needed to ratify employment contract for the MJC Vice President of Student Services.
Motion to approve by trustee Hinton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Garrett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. So we have a trustee absence.
Still moved.
All, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I think it should reflect, just, just on the record, this is, uh, for, uh, this is why trustee Aguilar stepped out. We'll put that in the record. And that he was seriously ill at our last meeting and that's why he could not attend. And with that, I'll still make the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So we got Darren, Darren and Jenny. Okay. I made any comments, uh, requests for future board agenda items? Right, seeing none? Okay, comments from board of trustees? Seeing none?
Did I, pardon me, did I hear no future?
Yes. Trustee begs?
Sorry. We used to say all the things we did during the month. And I'm going to do it this time because it makes me think of all the great stuff that we do here.
Okay.
And all the great programs that we have. And also it explains why I'm a little tired. So on 4/11, we had the Helen Ralph Child Development Graduation Ceremony. On 4/16, we had the 10-year recognition award ceremony. On the 17th, we had the MJC Scholarship Ceremony. And that was fabulous because I got to shake the hands of students who got scholarships in the name of professors that I had when I was at MJC, Dr. Everett Lynn Scott and Bob Magnus. And that was just a thrill for me. Um, I was, I had the MJC Puente Advisory Committee. The, um, I got up at 6:30 with Jenny for this one. Well, we got there at 6:30. It was the MJC School of Ag Last Breakfast and Scholarship Awards. I was on time.
Not even late for a minute.
I know, it's amazing. I just like to shock you. Um, on 4/24, we had the annual school board dinner, which, um, Dawn already talked about. We had the tri, tri chairs debrief and agenda. We had the farewell party honoring Chief Jelenic at the Regional Fire Training Center. We had the MJC Nursing Assistant Pinning Ceremony, the MJC Medical Assisting Completion Ceremony, the MJC Respiratory Care Completion Ceremony, the MJC Associate Nursing Program. And I mean, the, the auditorium was full and families were thrilled. There was music. I mean, it was just wonderful. Um, we had the, uh, MJC graduation and our board policy meeting. So we had tons of stuff. Our students were so excited, their families were excited. And it was a blessing to be able to be part of that. So I'm done. I wish I was an auctioneer, but I can't talk that fast.
Trustee Davis?
I was just saying addition, we had our Columbia College Scholarship Awards. We had our graduation and all the rest. Uh, is Lindsay still here? Oh, she left. Okay, well. I'll say this, that, yeah, well, Henry and I went to the award in Twelley County.
That Lindsay's professor.
I think she got one at that event.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. She did. And, uh, but it struck me that, uh, we can be, yeah. So anyway, uh, Twelley County, um, recognizes Columbia College and, uh, there is a educator awarded as part of that, that whole evening. All of the, the K-12 districts had their award winner there that evening to be honored, recognized with their families and board members and, and, and all. So at the Stanislaus County, of course, there is the K-12 Teachers of the Year that are represented, but no MJC representation. So I think I'm going to kind of task myself with presenting, you know, why not include YCCD, um, and, and MJC follow the, uh, example that Twelley County has set for recognizing, uh, community college educators. Um, there you go.
I was, uh, I was at the, yeah, I was at the, um, insurance conference during a week of a lot of these, so I wasn't here. But I've spoken on that already. So, and this last week I was extremely ill and missed, unfortunately, several of the things, including what I've heard to be the awesome graduation last Friday, which I'm really sad I missed.
Trustee Aguilar?
Just short, uh, this is my second year coming to Columbia graduation and I, I had a great time. So thank you guys. Did a great job.
Trustee Nicolau?
I'm an Ag student. Uh, I'm an Ag student, so I love going to the Ag event. They are the best dressed students we have at MJC. I'm gonna go on record for that, uh, the greatest handshakes. I also had the honor of going to the MJC Nurse Pinning Ceremony because our babysitter slash dance teacher graduated. I'm not a crier. I think I cried four times. It was so well done. I couldn't have been, uh, more proud. And that's not a department that I grew up in or know much about. They did a beautiful job. And then I'll just share from graduation, I love shaking hands. I am shocked how many students or graduates are nervous on stage because they did all the hard work. And at that point, they just need to smile. Um, so that always kind of
And we shook over 400 hands.
We did.
Got every single person.
I love that event. It is so, it is so humbling. I think it, it helps me to remember why we serve and why we're here. So thank you to those who have stayed in the crowd. Thank you for what you do throughout the year so that we can serve, celebrate moments like that.
Okay, the next regular meeting. No, you're out. You already talked to me. No, go ahead.
So just quickly, uh, before Graciela brings up my PowerPoint, um, so we have the, uh, 10-year recognition ceremony at MJC. Great event. Uh, thank you for the honor for allowing me to be there and participate. It was great to attend the, uh, Ag Last Breakfast with who I consider our Ag trustee, which is Jenny Nicolau and, and, and amazing all the scholarships that are out there. It's incredible. Uh, and the diversity that you see in the, in the Ag students, it's, it's great. And then obviously graduation. I mean, that's really the, the, the highlight of the whole year of, of what we get to participate in. And then finally, I have two things to add on this individual. I want to thank, uh, our interim, uh, Vice President of Instruction at MJC for writing up this wonderful honorary proclamation for Alan McKissick. He couldn't be here tonight because he had to agree with his wife to finally go on some travel. And so he was sad he couldn't be here, but, but he's here in spirit. But this is great. And I love what you added in here. I mean, the Magnum P.I. mustache. It, I mean, incredible, the picture from way back. It's great. And then finally, I'd like to thank Alan for the fact that we're going to get out of here half an hour early. So. Thank you, Alan, wherever you're at. That's all.
Okay, the next regular meeting of the board of trustees will be held on June 12th, 2024. Open session will begin at 3, closed session at 3:05. And it will be at the Assembly Union College District Boardroom, 2201 Blue Gum Avenue, Modesto. We're adjourned.